The maintenance and the driver's salary.
How many do you have actually using the services, just like the same amount or do you get different?
Oh, it's different. We get people new, I mean, one month we had, I think, fifteen new clients because we're the only ones in Carroll County that do the transportation floor. It does have one bus, I believe, but they weren't doing it there for a long time and they just started that back up. So we're the only ones. And then we will also get hospitals that will call us and they'll have a client that's in Carroll County that needs a trip home from being discharged from the hospital. So how many?
Just one other thing I could say too is that I do transportation. In Carroll County, we can transport anybody within the limits of Carroll County, any place in the state of Indiana. So we go a distance sometimes to take people to, you know, the medical doctors' appointments at the hospitals. You know, we go to Fort Wayne, we go to Indianapolis a lot. So we're on the road a lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak here briefly today. I'm one of the owners of Madam Carroll. Again, it's all odds. I am still here. We have a few challenges. So within the last year or two, we've evolved from a business, a tourism business, to bring people into Carroll County, fifty days out of the year, to one that operates two hundred and sixty days of the year. We're operational year-round now, which is one of the reasons we've been able to survive through COVID, through the lakes being drained and some of the other things we anticipate here coming into the future. If it's possible, could you throw that on the, just the overhead? So this is our current parking situation. Our main parking is area number one, which only holds about twenty-five cars. When the Madam Carroll was operational prior to our ownership, the spillover areas, area two, which we own, and then area three, which is part of the Sportsman complex, were used for rollover parking and we could staff for specific events. Now that we're open almost five days a week, it's not feasible to staff someone there at the highway all the hours that we're open. So we're seeing about eighty percent of our residents, eighty percent of our guests, having to park in areas two and three and then cross over four twenty-one, usually after dark, midnight, where there's no lighting. And so that equates to about five hundred people per week that are crossing the highway with no traffic signals in a high-speed area right after a bridge. So we've talked to a number of people, looked for a number of solutions, and I believe we found one that's outlined here. We have approval through INDOT as well as approval through SEFLAC, which is an environmental agency for the lakes, to put in a, a walkway. This is a six-foot-decked walkway that would allow our residents, customers of the Sportsman, of Copacetic, of the area to travel by switchback ramps from area two on the shorefront, across directly over to the boat, and back and forth. So this just eliminates that number of people crossing the highway all year long.
Wait, that goes under the bridge?
Yes, correct. So as opposed to going over the bridge, which is extremely costly, or even adding traffic signals with, which would disrupt traffic and bring in a whole bunch of different entities, we found this to be the best solution in terms of cost, in terms of feasibility, time. So this project is a forty-eight thousand dollar, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollar project that we'd be able to start on immediately. We're requesting that amount of money from either Edit to be placed in the Edit budget for next year or if you deem it feasible to pull from any auxiliary Edit funds for this year. Because I believe it's sort of a ticking time bomb before someone gets critically injured or killed just with the amount of bodies going across there.
So your request is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
Did they get copies of that?
Yes, they have a copy.
Gentlemen, we're one of the events, as they alluded to, that hasn't even happened yet for this year and we're planning for next year with you. We did make a request last year and I understand there isn't money available. We'll be using that for this year. One of the things this year is we've added a concert with Rebi Rigs to the country music thing. They're expecting a major turnout in the town on Saturday night. So they've worked with emergency management and everyone to get everything cleared for that. But we're standing there asking for consideration for three thousand dollars for next year.
When is the date of the festival?
The festival this year is the second weekend of September and we're expecting the same next year. We haven't met and set that date yet.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Three?
I agree with her.
It's probably, it's not from the Delphi County, it's from the Fair County, it's the Festival Committee.
I had never planned for Edit funding before. It had been done for parks on behalf of the park. My councilman, already, yeah, my councilman in the past, we are asking for eighteen hundred dollars to remove paint and LED lighting for the basement of Deer Creek Park Clubhouse. It had brought to my attention this spring that we really did not have any sort of a shelter for guests or campers that are in the park. And we want to repair some holes. We should see what we can repair, hang the lights and have it all cleaned, outfitted and painted. And I'm requesting that for twenty twenty-one. And then for twenty twenty-two. We would like to do a pressure wash, a patch, paint, and of the exterior of the clubhouse and the concrete block restoration in the basement of the, in painting, complete painting of that, the doors, the trim and the whole buildings. And I'm asking for three thousand dollars on that account for twenty twenty-two, if that's possible to do at this time.
Questions?
Does that basement have to be done right away?
Why? I thought that it would be best to try to get it done this fall to be ready for the upcoming season. We still have plenty of time, you know, for painting whether, I don't think that the, it could be done inside and outside both of them this year. But I think the inside of the basement could be done this year. It'd be good to have that done in and out of the way before we started on the next progress.
So this year you have to then, or it has to be done by, and it still will be done by, so.
If we put it on this agenda, they would have approved it, advertised and, and referred talk to them.
So can you still paint down there in October?
Possible, possible.
Well, I'm looking at what we asked the council.
If you want to amend their, their twenty twenty-one add.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to amend our.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvement plan, that's what I was looking for, for twenty twenty-one, to include eighteen hundred dollars for Deer Creek Park.
Yeah, right.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye. So we'll have to now ask the council to approve that.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think that's it.
I don't have a copy of that. I, I could prepare one. I didn't have time.
Okay, you could just knock one off, that way I can.
I will, I've got everything scribbled on paper. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes. I just don't know how much money we've got to spend, how much money we've got to spend.
We wrote that up. We don't have that actual figure. We have the total LIT, the lit funds, but we do not have it broken down yet.
I look down and see it's just, yeah.
That's like, there was like three hundred and forty-one thousand, something like that, aren't you?
Last year, that was two ninety-nine thousand, two ninety-nine and one. No, actually, no, we did not. But because they didn't create the two ninety-fourty, so two ninety-fourty, that would be most nine seventy-five. About four hundred and seventy-five.
Well, our position now on this will be we'll have to pull this all up and figure out how much we have to spend and decide what we can do and what we can't do and do the best we can. You'll see a lot of the work we, things here to support. It's just a question of how we spread, spread the money out. What, what do you think, gentlemen? Who do you want to go in?
Do this.
Yeah, that's just, I get it.
We want to get it over with.
Yeah, one, got it figured.
That all right, who do you want? Okay, yeah, let me, gentlemen. Yeah, now we're ready to move, I think, on down to County Attorney Ted Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, the board, properly said, we received four bids.
Four bids.
Here are the bids. Here is a tally sheet. All bits have been smoothed.
Okay, the way we set it up was that you could know what anybody else bid, or it was an open bidding situation. And so you could change your bid, you could raise it, and that hasn't happened twice. The bids we have right now, I'll just give them in order. Chapman, Chris, or Watson gave a bid for eleven thousand on July sixteenth. Mark Shock, bid eleven thousand fifty on August thirteenth, almost a month later. Chef and Chris, they watched and raised their bid to fifteen thousand on August sixteenth. And apparently on August sixteenth, also Mark Shock raised his bid to fifteen thousand fifty dollars. So with all those bids in, are all of them in proper order?
I have reviewed the bids and they're all in proper form. And the, the bidding documents, the terms and conditions were that they were allowed to redid, they were all open as you believed to. And the bidding, we cut off at nine AM and the auditor staff brought those into us. And those are, they're the only bits. I don't know when they came in after nine AM.
So we had one bid at eight fifteen on. Yes.
Quentin Jeff was on this morning too, aren't you?
It's pleasure of the board.
Seventeen thousand fifty dollars plus cost.
Yes, the terms and conditions were also that the successful bid would be paying all transaction costs. Recording, document preparation, closing, even the cost of advertisement for bids. Those all we added in to it and that would be paid in addition to fifteen thousand dollars in cash, fifteen thousand fifty. I have a form of a resolution. I can see if that's, it's ready. I, when I saw the bids, I went ahead and pulled the names and the documents that I had already prepared for this morning so that we could get it moving along. If you want me to go get that, I can.
That's what we need to do.
In the meantime, I gave you all, sent you a copy of the statute for emergency management advisory councils. Sent that in the mail to you. And. Why is, ask the commissioners formally adopt the membership of that, because you weren't able to find anything in the records?
Right, there's no, there is no ordinance or any records of a formal establishment of the advisory council for emergency management. There was, in two thousand and eighteen, there was a resolution made by the advisory council itself, forming the advisory council, which made it relatively large. And based off of the resolution that I had sent Ted, I think it was larger than what the state statute actually called for, which made getting the coordination meeting more and more difficult. So what I wanted to do is to have something on record from the commissioners, so we actually had one established in accordance with Indiana code. The one thing in a conversation with Ted and the state, state code does mention that there's supposed to be a member. I'll give you the actual. Under fourteen-three, or ten fourteen-three-seven-C, sub-paragraph six, it says, one commander of the local civil air patrol unit in the county, or the commander's destiny. The county doesn't have a civil air patrol unit. We have a cadet squadron. So we really do not have to have a representative from the civil air patrol on that board. And that, and we did in the past, it was Mr. Chapman, but since he had moved on from the civil air patrol, I think he retired or whatever. We haven't, when we sent the notices out for reassignment, we've never gotten any response.
Would you like to stand or, Gary's standing?
Right, but I, we had sent them out and we'd never received any responses on who they would like to appoint. So I did check with Ted and I checked with the state Homeland Security Attorney to make sure that we didn't have to have somebody. And since it is a cadet squadron and not a civil air patrol unit that has the capability to do aerial reconnaissance and search and rescue and stuff like that, we did not need them.
How many members are we going to be having there?
Looking, we'll still have the president or his representative as a commissioner, the president or his representative from the council, the mayor, the representative, of course, from the city. And then what is still kind of left out for interpretation is each incorporated town. Some counties have one representative from one of their towns that covers all, and they communicate amongst themselves. Or they have each town. So like, we could either have one representing the four towns, or we can still have the four-town representatives.
There's precedent for having a single representative, I think even in Carroll County, where commissioners choose and then rotate that individual. And I think that may also be the case of the incorporated towns under the area planning law. Do the towns choose their own representative or does the agency, I, I, I put, sorry to put you on the spot, Ken, but I don't remember what the statute says, but I know there's one representative for all the towns, right?
Correct.
So it's not, it, it, I mean, the advantage is, is that the board is of an equal size because they have to comply with the notice statutes and the form, the form present, and open door law, all that. So it's, it's good to have a set number. And I think the board could even, because they, if, if the town's recommended that they wanted one person or the board could, and solicit the recognition of the town, the commissioners could choose that individual and, and name an alternative even if you wanted to, from, from amongst, amongst the towns. So the towns will always, will always have some kind of representation, at least two individuals that would be available to do that.
And I think one of the benefits is that there's a lot of leeway in the Indiana code for the emergency management boards because the board itself, as we grow, they can, written in the code is that the board can increase its size based on organizations or other nonprofits and private or public entities, if they deem necessary that would benefit the operations of emergency management, as is written in the code.
So today we just adopted this.
I advise us what, how do you want to compose it, or then ultimately perform it in ordinance? If you put it off at the next meeting.
If you need the exact wording for it, it's number five. It's the representatives of private and public agencies or organizations that do the civil emergency management considered appropriate by the county emergency management advisory council. And it was discussed at our last advisory board briefly, that we were going to send, I was going to send the code out to them, let them talk as well, because I think this was going to be the topic of discussion today to get the ball rolling. And when the advisory board will begin in November, unless we need to call a special meeting, if you guys want to move it fast, get this moving faster, we're going to look at the actual makeup and see if we wanted to expand some more private, with a couple more private agencies or some more public agencies in it.
Give me an example of a private agency that we're going to.
Right now, we don't have any private agencies on it. Usually some counties will have a nonprofit or even like the American Red Cross or the United Way on their board. We don't have the Red Cross or the United Way on our board, but there are some nonprofits in here that could be beneficial. We just have it written as a board, discuss it.
How many members did you want? Ask a question, so.
Well, that's what the board has to decide. Right now, we're setting at fourteen, or thirteen. The board's thirteen. I would rather it be a little bit smaller. And that, an example is when, we've got the Delphi Police Chief, the Florida Police Chief, the Burlington Town Marshal, the Sheriff on there. So we've got four representatives from law enforcement. When we have that meeting, we're pulling those four individuals off the street. Now the sheriff doesn't normally patrol himself, but when they are, shorthand is he does go out. That's taken four law enforcement officers that could be available in here for meetings. So if I could, amongst the board, if we can reduce that footprint of law enforcement, it might be beneficial. And law enforcement is still out there, but they need. I still believe that we need a representative from EMS on there and a representative from the Carroll County Sheriff's or Fire Chiefs Association.
So you want fire?
So fire EMS, police, and of course, the ones that were required to have.
One commissioner, one.
One commissioner, one council. Those are required. The mayor, of course, is one, or your representative. And then we could either do, I mean, it could be one representative of the town, rotate the town like they do in the APC, or we still do one from each one of the towns. So we have to take it back up to twelve, twelve. But we do, like, we do have the coroner's on my board as well, right now.
You have the coroner now?
The coroner is on the board right now.
You want to have a nine-member board? I think it'd be easier to get a four.
Yes.
And what about business owners or anything much that can do, a part of this?
Not right now. We don't have any business owners. I mean, we could always, and that's what the board has to. I wanted them to have some thoughts when they come back to meet in November.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing and you tip this to your board and then they come back to us with.
Right, and we'll come back with the formal finalization of what the board makeup should look like. But we wanted to get the ball rolling on actually setting something in stone.
Sounds good, yeah.
So we got the fire EMS police, commissioner, council, mayor, coroner, seven, then you want two more to make the nine?
We have to have a representative from town rounds.
So you just need one more?
So I didn't mean we could make it.
Now, if you have the mayor, you have a representative from Delphi two, or if that's the rep, so, so I'm wondering is the town representative. We've got two, Delphi, Florida, Burlington, you're one.
So the way it is with the resolution, the mayor's on there, a representative from each one of the towns. So there's five, a commissioner, councilman, the Delphi Police Chief, the Florida Police Chief, a representative from EMS, a representative from the Fire Chief Association, the coroner. I'm not on the board because I report, I am responsible for the Indiana code to the president of the board and the commissioners. It's, it's a weird dynamic and how it's, and that's a, it's, it's a weird mix in how it goes.
So I'm just looking at this. If we have coroner, fire, EMS, police, commissioner, council, mayor, now we're up to seven. If we wanted to give the four towns two representatives.
We'd have a primary and an alternate, kind of like the, the local emergency planning committee, you have a primary and a proxy. So if the primary person could not be there for that, then they, they could alternate. So if you wanted to do the town. So if you wanted to do the town, you can say this year or for 2022, Flora would be the primary and Burlington would be the alternate. So if Flora's representative couldn't make it to the meeting, that Burlington would...
So that's something the board we have now can decide. Going back, bringing back with the recommendation what they would like to have.
What they would like to see.
Because we want these, ones you already got.
We have to have the mandatory ones on there. And then the board, and if the board wants to stay at eleven or... Because you have to have fifty-one percent.
Right. You have the corner, so it'd be easier if you had ones.
Right.
So I said we'll stick with the nine or eight we have, or, yeah, nine and eight, we have one town representative. That makes it easier to get a corner.
If we have one representative for the four towns, then that gives us eight and we give you one more to decide on.
Right.
If we decided to say we wanted to have Burlington and Flora have one representative, they alternate. And Camden and Yelwyn have one, did that give us nine?
Nine.
So.
I don't guess what we need to do. That way they just have a set one.
So you're going to have two town representatives?
Yeah.
Well, that would be our recommendation to the board to look at.
Okay.
Okay. Back to the board sale. I took a form of resolution and I inserted the amount and the names and so this resolution is now on board with the board. One more paper.
Is that what you want to go with Ted? Is the acceptance?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion on this to...
Yes, the first one is, there's the acceptance that's going around to sign that.
The first one is what?
It is the acceptance of the bid, of the successful bidder. And that is going to be attached to the original bid that's in that green folder. And we're going to make a copy of that for the bidder before. Is the bidder present?
No.
S what?
S C H O C A.
S C H? Okay. See if that affects the signature page on the resolution.
Okay, so.
No. So we've already accepted the bid and now it would be in order to consider and adopt the resolution.
Okay. I entertain a motion, Jim. So I have a motion and a second for resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh three, accepting the bid of Mark Shock for fifteen thousand fifty dollars. Plus costs. If they're all in favor of that motion, please say aye. Number six.
So sign briefly three. One is going to go to the title and one for the county and one for the successor bid.
Okay. I guess we're down to appraisal update for utilities.
Yes, the county still needs to get easement, utility easement for the jail site. The original appraisal was done less than two years ago. It's still legal from a standpoint that's less than two years. But from a standpoint of, the law requires good paid effort and so forth. And we'll know if there's been any fluctuation in the market. I would recommend that the update, the appraisal would not require a new, the original appraisal, Fraser. The bid was Lonnie Miller, he's a co-lead. And he did the original appraisal. He's available to do it. I contacted Dr. Carolyn Snyder who drew the drawings for the easement and they said, yes, it's part of a good idea. So I contacted and the amount of the update would be twelve hundred dollars for the update of the appraisal by Lonnie Miller. And I would request, and I understand from the auditor that there is a line item for professional services that's available to commissioners and it has approximately ten thousand dollars. So my request would be that the board approve, obtain an update of the appraisal of the utility easement for jail for Lonnie Miller for a price of twelve hundred dollars and made from professional services line item in the commission budget.
So I have an updated appraisal for the easement out there utilities to the jail. Right?
So we're done with that one? We don't have a rework, well, sure, by the end of last, probably not.
I heard twelve percent this year.
That's true. Twelve percent?
Most four percent of the board.
We'll believe in the easement, until we find out what the council did here. We haven't got a report yet on what's...
Right.
So I don't think anyone's going to money until we know for sure they're going to, what they're going to give us. Because what they're going to give us, it might go to another. We should have been building by now, in my opinion.
Well, I think that's a good point to you. Unless we know we're going to be building, why do we need a topic? If it's a no, go.
All right.
I think Matt Peddard was supposed to give information to the council before today. He was going to try to get it before today, but I didn't have anything up to nine o'clock this morning, so.
Yeah, I thought I heard an email from you saying you were going to do the best to get this today. Email's got it to us today. Still, still got to go through the council. I think the table might be done for the next meeting in September.
You usually work, but I didn't take the phone to get the information.
I've all had with the nineteen, uh, place of the...
Uh, the appraisal.
The drawings are over there.
The drawings are over there. And it doesn't have to do all of the other stuff that a youth appraisal. It's really just looking at comps and seeing if there are new comps. So that will take a long time.
I don't think so. I'm not against those. I told him I bugs, but it might get to you pretty well.
Okay, Beth, would you put this back on the agenda for the next meeting?
But yes, September you should know.
And then we're down to American Rescue.
Okay, Marion County and the city of Indianapolis is creating four million dollars of the American Rescue plan money in Poet's Basin there. And that normally comes out of the general fund. The American Rescue plan says you're not supposed to spend any money on anything that's paid, paid out of the general fund. Isn't that right, Beth?
Yes, but I have had other auditors to say that they're spending other monies that come out.
So I am suggesting that a, Martin Farber reached out to their client county. He said, "Do you want any help with the American Rescue plan?" And I said, "No, I don't think so. We're pretty limited in what Carroll County can do. We can't build a new jail." Well, I'm not so sure now. So I think, I've asked Rick Hall from Martin Farber to, to send me an essay what he suggests for a scope of services. So I'm just bringing it to your attention. I would like permission to go ahead and get that scope of services and suggest an engagement from him so that people look at that and decide if you want to engage to do that. Because I think they are helping other counties and...
I'd like to piggyback on that because it's, it's far more than...
Right.
Well, I'd like to hire somebody, grant writer. I think we're missing out on a lot of grants. We don't have a grant writer. Mike and I was talking a lot back. There's a lot of grants out there that could help us. I mean, a lot.
They'd be somewhere else, but they may give us the names and I could probably get some names and Mike could probably get some names.
So I would like to have a grant writer for the county. They'll be the ones that, you know, like Mike says, he sees a grant he'd like to go for. We kind of, we say, okay, let's give you honor.
In my experience, the grant writers are pretty specific on the kinds of grants that they have experienced. You get a general grant writer, you may not get the one that's got the, you know, the magic...
Don't have the grant.
Secrets sauce for, for what you're applying for, so. And they, they don't usually charge a whole lot. A lot of them will charge on basically a contingency basis. It's, you don't pay them anything once you get the grants, so.
Some of them are a flat fee as well.
They're flat fee.
Some are a flat fee and then they can also write in a portion of their grant that they're awarded up to X percent.
I've seen a note for zero once I get one.
Right.
So Brian's and Dorper can help us with the financial part. It took me almost a whole day to get registered.
Year mark.
To get registered for this. I mean, we are registered and it's been submitted. I'm waiting on a response. Should be, probably, probably be next week when I'm on the station, but. So anyway, that's nothing to do with the grants. We need, we need advice on other things than we just have to spring it.
Okay, so what, what, what we're doing? So zero written here on the, what you, what you have advised us on here now, it's just on the American Rescue plan. On, on, we ought to, we ought to take care of that part first. I think it'd be a great idea. I'm sure we'd like it to work out if we can get some money for a jail out of that American Rescue plan. So do you need a motion from us?
No, just your consensus. That I have authority to ask for a scope of services that includes compliance, which a little used, uses that, that Carroll County.
Yeah, well, why don't you give us a wide theme?
Yes.
I think some, some counties are claiming so much per month. I mean, it's not like they have to. I think upon their services. I do not know that they're fact, but that's the way it looked to me on my emails.
I think there is ongoing aspect to it, this, that there wasn't true of the, what was it, the CARES Act. It was not true that Carroll...